County Cable, Montgomery.
Hi, I'm Susan Kennedy and welcome to this county council town hall meeting. We're here at Redland Middle School in Durwood where residents have gathered with their questions and comments for the council members. But before we go to the audience for questions, I'm going to turn it over to council vice president, Roger Berliner, for some opening remarks.
Thank you, Susan, and very brief opening remarks. Thank you all for being here. Good evening to you. Good evening to you guys. And tell me, are we getting a badge out of this? Is that why we're here? Yeah, I kinda thought so. This wasn't because, oh my goodness, it's so much fun, we have to come, right? No, I don't, I didn't think so. All right. Well, we're glad you guys showed up. We do this fairly often. We try to come out and meet with the community. Most of us do this individually, but now we do this collectively so that you can ask all of us the questions that are on your mind. We just came through a very difficult budget. There are lots of issues before us. We're dealing with transportation issues. We're dealing with environmental issues. We're dealing with the school issues. We have a lot on our plate and we know you have a lot on your minds and a lot to share with us. So this is your opportunity to talk to my colleagues who really are quite expert on most of the things that are on your minds. What I'd like to do is turn to my left and have my colleagues introduce themselves.
I'm a council member, Mark Elrich, and I'm a council member-at-large, so I represent the entire county.
Hi, I'm Nancy Florine. I'm also an at-large member representing the whole county. I chair the Planning, Housing and Economic Development Committee and serve on the Transportation and Environment Committee, and I'm in my third term.
And again, I'm Roger Berliner, and I'm vice president of the council. The council president could not be here tonight. Let me also apologize for council member Craig Rice, who this district is, we are sitting in his district, and council member Nancy Navarro. Council member Navarro has with us tonight her chief of staff, Ms. Midi Figueroa. I am, I represent District One, which is Bethesda, Chevy Chase, and Potomac, and I serve as chair of the Transportation, Infrastructure, Energy and Environment Committee.
Thank you. I'm a council member, Phil Andrews. I'm in my fourth term on the council. I represent the Durwood, Rockville, Gaithersburg, North Potomac, and Washington Grove area, including the part of Durwood right across the street. So, nice to see a lot of familiar faces here. I chair the council's Public Safety Committee and serve on the Education Committee as well.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Hans Reimer, one of the four at-large council members. I was just elected last fall, so I've been on the council now for about six months. It's been quite a ride dealing with the budget and feeling really good about what we were able to accomplish this year. I serve on the Government Operations and Fiscal Policy Committee and the Transportation, Energy, Infrastructure and Environment Committee. And if I can be of any assistance, please contact me. Thanks.
And I'm council member George Leventhal, also an at-large member representing all the people of Montgomery County. I'm chairman of the Health and Human Services Committee.
Before we turn back to you, Susan, let me acknowledge some special guests. Where's Rosemary? Hello, Rosemary. Arconian, who is past president of the Greater Goshen Civic Association. Nice to see you, Rosemary. Immediate vice president. We have Claudette Lys, who is the president of the North Village Homes Corporation. Do I have that correct? You're gonna be apparently the first questioner. Good for you. Kathy Matthews. Kathy is the Up County Regional Service Center Director. Nice to see you, Kathy. Thank you for your good work. And John Moriarty, our scout master. Welcome to you, sir, and to your scouts.
Thank you for having me.
Well, it's a privilege. So, I think with that, what I'd like to do is turn it over to Susan, and we'll take your questions, and I'll funnel them to my colleagues.
Okay, we're gonna get started right away with Claudette Lys.
My name is Claudette Lys. I'm the president of Nord Village Home Corporation. I represent 888 townhouses. In other words, families. I'm here because of a great concern to Nord Village, and that is the new modified number four, where you have M-83. Now, that's just an option, a new option that got put on the table this spring, where you have M-83, starting from mid-county, going down Goshen, going down Whitman, to Brink, to 27 on north. The impact of this modification would be horrendous for Nord Village. Not only Nord Village, but it would be Nordgate. Basically, between Nordgate and Nord Village on Whitman, you have probably 80 feet. It just doesn't make sense that this is an option that's even being considered. But I understand, through Representative Rice, that you have to look at all the options. But in this climate of not having enough money, the amount of money that you'll spend on this option, which doesn't make sense, to me, anyway, but don't take my word for it, just go out there with a camera and take pictures of both sides of the street, and you'll know exactly where I'm coming from.
I've met with members of your community, so I promise you, I am somewhat familiar with this. As chair of the Transportation Committee, I'll ask my colleague, Ms. Florine, who's a member of the committee, to respond as well, and maybe some other parties would like to respond. But do know, I think you framed it well. It is a new option that's been on the table. We are far from making any decisions with respect to this. I promise, your community will be heard at the moment in time when we get close to a decision, and your concerns will be understood and taken into account. Ms. Florine.
This is a long simmering issue for everyone in the room to appreciate. Challenge has been really connecting Clarksville to the rest of the county, and somewhere on Route 27 to Montgomery Village has been proposed on the master plan for a number of years, a road that would really extend Mid-County Highway up to Route 27. Has a lot of environmental implications to do that. Certainly, the rules have changed since that had first been identified. And so, the rule, the challenge is, how do we address current and projected transportation issues up there? So, one of the rules for looking at road, new road construction, is making sure you examine all the alternatives. So it sounds to me this is one of those, they've been looking at this for a number of years. I would not hold my breath. I don't think that, I would be shocked if there's any movement on this very soon. We're looking at a lot of other kinds of initiatives for moving people around these days, and I think, as you indicated, there's very little money to be devoted to these sorts of things. But the job of the county transportation planners is to look at how we best alleviate projected travel needs. And regrettably, Montgomery Village is right in the middle of all of that, and of course we know, there are other communities who have different points of views, and all of these points of views will need to be examined before the county takes any, any steps moving forward. But as I said, it's nowhere near happening.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's why I'm here, so you know where our stand is.
There'll be plenty of opportunities, I promise you.
Stand up.
My name is Rachel Sennett, and I live in Durwood. Mr. Andrews has been in my home several times. I applaud his efforts in the past for his stand on tobacco and a variety of other issues. But unfortunately, I am also a Montgomery County public school teacher. And I'm not here just as a teacher. I do not believe that it is consignable that you have, you have not bargained in good faith with your public servants. Your firemen, your teachers, your police department. We are paid to protect your homes, protect your, your personal lives, and to protect and teach your children. And you have not bargained in good faith with us for years. And you've also agreed to pay a $25 million penalty to the state? A penalty of $25 million? How in the world do you expect your teachers, who are professionals, and your firemen and your policemen, who are protect, who are professionals, to continue to do the jobs they do?
Thank you.
It's just not there. And I'm sorry to say that there are 128 staff members at my school, and we plan to vote you out.
Thank you for your point of view, and I'll ask a couple of my colleagues to respond.
Can you answer about the $25 million penalty? And I guess--
I'll take a, I will take a stab at it, because I have sat down and had conversations with your school board leadership with respect to this, and so let me just answer it in this manner. It isn't determined how that 20, A, whether we will have the penalty, and B, if we do have the penalty, how that penalty will be allocated is between the county and the school system. None of those decisions have been made yet. So to suggest at this moment in time that it is a foregone conclusion that the school system will absorb the $26 million is not something that I, as vice president of the council, am willing to assume in this moment in time. So, we will deal with that issue if we do in fact have a penalty, and we will deal with it openly, and we will discuss it, and all the stakeholders will be involved. Let me, let me turn to first, to council member Leventhal, who asked first, and then to council member Andrews.
Well, you've made a lot of observations. I want to respond to just a few of them. First of all, every single member up here, with the exception of Hans Reimer, whose children are too young, either has now or has had children in public schools. We are all very grateful for the work of Montgomery County teachers. We do support Montgomery County teachers. This was a difficult budget, not just in Montgomery County, but for every county and every state throughout the country. Collective bargaining is called for in the county charter. It is the law. But the county council is not a party to the collective bargaining process. So I do want to clarify that when you say, "We did not bargain in good faith," I understand that we are here representing county government, but the county executive, a different branch of the government, is responsible for bargaining with those bargaining units that he's responsible for, the MGO, police, and firefighters, and it is the school board that is responsible for bargaining with your union and other school system unions. So, the county council isn't at the bargaining table. Now, this was an unusual year. I feel about collective bargaining the way Winston Churchill felt about democracy. It's the worst possible system, except for all the others that have been tried. I do believe we need to restore an orderly process, and I think we will. I think it was unfortunately necessary this year, facing a $300 million gap between our projected expenditures and the revenues that we had. We only had the revenues that we had. Unlike the federal government, we can't borrow to pay our operating expenses. It's almost as though from year to year, we're living paycheck by paycheck. The tax money we have is all we have to spend. And so, we could not provide cost of living increases, much as we wish we could. We could not provide step increases, much as we wish we could. And we simply didn't have the money to increase compensation, acknowledging that the cost of groceries and the cost of gasoline is going up for everyone. And so, public employees are making sacrifices. We acknowledge those. We're not happy about them. These were tough sacrifices. They were tough decisions, and I believe that as time goes by, the decisions we made will put the county on a stronger financial footing, and we will be able, once again, to acknowledge that inflation is significant, that costs are increasing, and that we'll be able to increase compensation for public employees. That's what we all want to do, but we simply couldn't afford to do it this year.
I'd like to allow Mr. Andrews, since almost is a point of personal privilege, because you invoked his name, as well as the threat of 126 people voting him out of office, which I would say--
Well, it's nice to see you, and it's always nice to see constituents, and I have knocked on a lot of doors, as you know. I would agree with what my colleague said, but I would also add this, and that is, I can understand certainly why people are not happy. No one likes to go through what people have gone through in the past several years, whether they're teachers, or firefighters, or police officers, or social service workers, or librarians. There have been sacrifices all along, and it has been necessary in order to avoid even higher tax increases, or more layoffs, or deeper cuts in services. We've had significant cuts in services. We've had significant tax increases, and we have, to the best of our ability, avoided layoffs. And that has been crucial, in my view, to avoiding worse outcomes. I will point out that for a number of years, I have been advocating that the contracts that had come over from the executive were not sustainable, and I voted against many of them in the past five years, and on that basis. And I think it's clear that the contracts that were negotiated in 2008, 2009 were not affordable now, and they were not sustainable then. And so, it's not about the worth of employees. I think employees are worth more than pro athletes, who of course, make lots more money, because it's a different market. But the fact is, we have to balance the needs of our, of all of our constituencies, which include people who have to pay the bill, and people who are working directly for government, and, and the people that are receiving the services. So, the council's done its best to find that balance. It's not something that many people are happy with, and I can understand that. But we do what we think is right, and, and I have consistently said that we need to have a long-term view of contracts and not look at just whether they're affordable in the first year.
Normally, I'm going to limit our answers to two members, but this is such an overarching issue, and I know some of my other colleagues might want to speak to it. Council member Elrich, you wanted to weigh in as well.
Yeah, I'm a former teacher, and I don't take what we did lightly. But I think the other points that people have made are really relevant. We ran out of money, and if we had not taken essentially $30 million out of benefits this year, that would have been over 300 layoffs throughout county government, in addition to the other layoffs that we've undertaken. Our employees have gone a couple of years without COLAs, they've gone a couple of years without STEPS. Last year, county employees outside the school system got visited with furloughs of three, five, and eight days. Not all those employees got to make it up in overtime, which is the kind of the new urban legend that's going around, around that there. Most county government employees did not make up that time with overtime. And we recognize this has had a serious impact, but we don't have the resources. And until we get the resources, we're trying to figure out, how do you maintain basic social services in this county? In February, I guess it was, we were doing a mid-year budget cuts, and we had to have a debate about whether we were gonna restore $20,000 to a feeding program to seniors at three centers. That's how far things have come in Montgomery County. When this council has to debate whether it can find $20,000 to feed seniors a few days a week, this is a different kind of economic world than most of us are familiar with. It's not the economic world that any of us want to be operating in. And so, I, and I think like others, view this as, this is where we are in the moment. This moment will not last forever. I believe the people should get COLAs. I believe the people should get increases for longevity of service. I think those are good things, and I think that's good labor policy. But at the end of the day, if you don't have the revenues, you don't have the revenues. And we honestly and really did not have the revenues. You would be hard-put to find fat in this budget, and we're all looking at things that we cut and wish we didn't have to cut those things. We're not gonna serve the people who need health care in this county. We did not put enough money in the budget to serve all the people who need health care. We did not put enough money in the budget with all these things we did to serve the people who need housing assistance. So a lot of unmet needs out there, and it's been really hard. And it's not something we did because we took any happiness in it, or because we thought this was a great victory and the great moment to do it. It was simply what we had to do.
Mr. Reimer.
What I could just add to the conversation is, it's important to understand some of the unique dynamics in Montgomery County that contributed to the collapse in revenue that happened and that this county was faced with. You know, this county has had a surging real estate market. We've all experienced that, and when that real estate market collapsed, the tax revenue coming into the county collapsed with it. There are a lot of residents who make money in the stock market, or who have high incomes, and those incomes, you know, took substantial reductions when the economy tanked, and as a result, the county revenues collapsed. So the revenues went down something like 20% to 25%. Is that, that's about right, last year, on the income tax. And so, you know, the floor has fallen dramatically, and we are trying to, you know, work our way forward from that. But the bubble really did burst. In spite of that, you know, the county has put more money into the school every year than it put in, into the schools every year than it put in the year before. This year, the county council put in $31 million more to MCPS than we did last year. That was as best we could do, but you know, it's, in the, in the context of the country, where around the country, there are school systems that are laying off teachers, you know, thousands of teachers in one school district. Here, we are able to continue to increase the resources that we are putting towards our school system. So, you know, we are, I think, maintaining very strong priorities. At the same time, we have incredibly limited resources.
One follow-up question.
And it's very quick. Rather than going to your public servants, why didn't you spread the pain of sacrifice throughout the entire county and raise taxes? Because you're asking your public servants to carry the brunt of sacrifice. I'm not here to argue for my COLA or my STEP. I'm just asking for fairness with each single taxpayer in the county, because it's the public servants that are hurting.
Understood, and I'll give you a brief response, and then I'm gonna ask Susan to move on. One recognized that what we asked our employees to do was to $30 million of a $300 million gap. We did not balance the budget on the backs of our employees. They were a 10% solution. That's all. And quite frankly, what we did, the county executive had sent over a proposal to have our county employees, our firemen, our police, our bus drivers, increase their costs of health care and pension. It would have cost $5,000 for some of our employees in one year, and we said, "That's not fair." So what we said is, "We're gonna take that $30 million, and we're gonna allocate it across all county agencies," of which MCPS represents 2/3 of our employees. When we did that, we reduced the cost of our firemen and of our police for health care by 3/4. All right? So we did our best, and quite frankly, we did end up increasing property taxes by $75 million, because we were below the charter limit by $75 million. We honored our collective pledge not to exceed the charter limit, but our property tax revenue had fallen so low that we were literally $75 million below the charter. So we did increase taxes by $75 million out of that $300 million gap. So I can say to you, as honestly as I know how, we did share the pain the best we knew how.
My name is Chip Berman. I own the Out of the Way Cafe, and it's very nice to see so many old friends and a few new ones as well. I obviously, as a small business owner, have a great deal of empathy for what you went through during the past budget year. In that regard, you may consider me the canary in the coal mine, because what you're facing on the public side is funded by the private side. And I'm going to deal now just with a specific, one specific of the 34 taxes and licensing fees that I pay, in order that people understand the scope that we now bear. And the first question I would ask would be, have you no compassion for small business? I am here to warn of tax flight, as Councilman Reimer noted. I experience it on a weekly basis. Customers my age, guests my age. I'm moving to South Carolina, I'm moving to North Carolina. This is something that you will see in an increasingly dramatic circumstance. I am here specifically to protest the lack of infrastructure for my business. I am here to ask why a private utility, specifically Pepco, that regularly interrupts service to my business, be allowed to take a security deposit equaling four months' usage as a direct consequence of their inability to deliver the service that I need to earn the money to pay them in the first place? I'm here to ask why 22% of my monthly energy tax-- Oh, I'm sorry. I meant energy bill-- --is taxed. Almost $7,000 a year is taxation that is hidden income tax on me personally, one that does not accrue to my personal liability to municipal, state, or federal authorities. $7,000 a year that passes through, hidden. No one here sees that impact. Is my business robust? Yes. Is the tax bite too large? Without doubt. I was told today to fire people, to hold their wages, and to pay the government instead. That is a quote. And if there is no compassion in your hearts for small business people like me, people who have contributed millions of dollars to wages and taxes in the last 23 years, I am here to ask specifically, who will take my place when I am gone? Thank you.
I'm gonna ask our chair of our Planning, Housing and Economic Development Committee, who works very hard with small business community, to respond to your small business question, and I'll, I'll take a shot at some of the Pepco sets of issues, if you'd like.
I, I'm glad you spoke, Chuck, because that's sort of the other side of the coin that we just heard about, which is how much revenue can we generate from our small businesses? We actually raised the property tax in this last budget decision. Not to worry. We raised taxes on commercial properties. And we, we have significantly increased the energy taxes that everybody pays in Montgomery County. We did that last year. It's set to sunset next year. The challenge is, how far can we go to keep you here, Chuck, and, and keep our teachers, and pay our firefighters and our police officers, and help the most vulnerable? That is one of our, the preeminent issues that, that we focus on every year as we work through this budget, and as we face decreased revenues from every source, because Montgomery County residents are making less money. They are less rich, and as a result, they can't, we have plenty of people in foreclosure. How do we preserve ourselves as a community and be fair to all the players? That is the challenge. We regret what the decisions that we've had to make that drive, drive people from here. We want to make the right call so that we can keep you all here, serve your needs, and not tax you so much that you abandon us. That's the trade-off, and it is a continual issue. We do have a number of programs of support, a variety of exemptions, this, that, and the other things. Most things can be negotiated with businesses, but at a certain point, the question is, how can we keep you in business? How can we attract more business here? That will help us pay these bills and allow everyone to prosper at the level that they'd like to be at. That's the tipping point question. We have that debate pretty regularly at the council. Should we support this new industry? Is the cost too much? Should we build that infrastructure to support you? And I will, I'll turn to Councilmember Berliner, because he's our energy czar on the Pepco challenge. That is a never-ending one, but it's a good point. It's a good point. We, we pay a lot for our energy, and we have not been getting the service that we, we need. You write about all these things, and you should know that we worry about them just as much as you are.
I'm gonna let Mr. Elrich take a crack, too, because I know he's a strong advocate on behalf of small business.
This is really, this is really tough, you know. I feel sometimes that people approach us as if you're dealing with people who are either ideologically opposed to small businesses, or ideologically opposed to unions. to unions. And that you look at the votes we take and assume that, that this has some basis in what we believe, as opposed to being more like accountants, looking at the books and saying, my gosh, there's no money, and we have to appropriate this differently. I'm sensitive to what you have to say. And I've actually operated a small business. I know what it's, what it means to make payroll and to make insurance, and to have to send in the check to the feds for the withholding that you kept from the employees. It's really tempting to try to slide into your operating expenses to carry you through to the next month. That's a hard world to work in. But I'd say that, think about the question that she raised, and then imagine where we'd be if we hadn't raised the energy taxes last year. How many more services would have collapsed? What would have happened to police and fire? What would have happened to teachers, had we not done that? Had we not done things to try to maintain the quality of life in the county? How many people would be here to be your customers in the first place? I mean, the struggle here is to try to find a way to maintain the quality of life, so people say, this is a place I want to live, so they park their incomes here, so that we collect the taxes and we can continue to feed the quality of life. And that's, that's the dilemma we find ourselves in. And it's not easy finding the point where it's too much on one thing, and that leads to, you know, too little for something else. Your Pepco question Roger's going to talk about, but I'll just say quickly, I think that we ought to be exploring a public utility, as other jurisdictions have done. They will never be accountable to, to the ratepayers of Montgomery County, as long as the first people they're accountable to are their stockholders. And this is too important a utility to leave in the hands of a company that puts us second, and we're totally captive. And one of my friends said, can we have competition? And, and, you know, competition is usually the quickest answer. And I pointed out, competition for Pepco does not mean energy generation. It means power lines. And so competition would mean a second set of power lines. And I don't think anybody wants a second set of power lines. So, competition's not going to solve this. I think we have other, other ways we can go.
And your complaint with respect to the security deposit is well-founded, and I'm curious as to what it is. I hope you will advise us in an email follow-up, Mr. Berman, with respect to it. Know that this council and this county is doing everything within our ability to have the Maryland Public Service Commission, which is to regulate Pepco and hold them accountable. We drafted locally a state law, which now has reliability standards that will go into effect, and hold them accountable for the first time. And it was our council that asked the commission to open an investigation into Pepco's reliability. Because it is simply unacceptable that we, in Montgomery County, the economic engine of the state of Maryland, have a utility that serves us, that ranks in the lowest quartile in the nation on sunny days. I'm not talking about on storms. I'm talking about on a sunny day, Mr. Berman. These people rank in the lowest quartile in the nation. And we just cannot and will not accept that. And just know, we're doing everything within our limited power to influence the decision-makers who really can make a difference. And that's the Maryland Public Service Commission. We have to make, take a break, and we're a little overdue in taking our break.
We do, we do. We need to take a quick break. But when we come back, we're going to find out why these Boy Scouts, who are sitting in the front row, are here tonight. So don't go away. We'll be back with more of our town hall meeting.
Now there is only one number you need to remember for non-emergency calls, 311. M C 311 is Montgomery County Government's new online and telephone information system. Need information? Have a problem or complaint? Trying to locate a county government facility? Call 311. The call center is open Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The website is available 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Remember, call 311 to get it done.
Hi, I'm Susan Kennedy. We're back with our town hall meeting at Redland Middle School in Durwood. And standing next to me, I have Kurt Wilson from Troop 443. And he and his troop members are sitting here in the front row, and they're paying very close attention to what the council members have to say tonight. And they're here to earn a badge. Tell us what your badge is, and explain to us what you have to do to earn it.
Well, we're doing the Communications Badge badge. And we have to write a five-minute speech and learn about how communicating can be used in jobs and other forms in life.
So what have you learned here tonight? Can you tell me anything in the first half hour that you've been here? Have you learned anything from these people sitting up here?
I've learned that there are many different debates going on each week. And I never realized that there were so many people that needed attention.
Excellent. So that's, I'm very impressed. Good lesson in government, yes. Well, thank you very much for being here, and good luck.
Master, I think they get two badges out of this.
I, I hear a politician come in.
Hey, I'm Gretchen Kingen. I live right on Moncaster Mill Road. And I met with some of you a couple of years ago in a town meeting like this, to express concern for our kids who walk up and down Moncaster Mill Road to come to this school. And I just wanted to thank you in your involvement for working with the ICC and the stewardship project, which is building a path all the way down the road, so the kids can cross safely. So I'm thankful for that. But I also want to bring up the concern of traffic and speed on Moncaster Mill Road. We're very concerned, even with that path coming through. We've got wrecks on a regular basis. We have speeding. And even though the ICC is now functioning, at least partially, it's not relieving enough cars that we're seeing a big difference. So if you could address those concerns, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you all. I have Mr. Andrews, who represents at least one portion of Moncaster Mill.
Thank you. Well, Moncaster Mill Road is, as you know, a, a very busy road. It's not changed with the building of the ICC. It remains a very busy road, and it remains, in many ways, an unsafe road. I think all of us remember the, the fatal crash back in 2000 or 2001, where a landscaping truck plowed into a school bus, and the school bus driver was killed. I worked then with Councilmember Nancy Dasek to lobby the state. And the state, under the leadership then of Governor Glenn Denning, did make about $10 million worth of safety improvements to Moncaster Mill Road. But ultimately, I think Moncaster Mill Road needs to be widened to four lanes and straightened in parts with more sidewalks and paths, so that it is comprehensively improved. And that would have been, in my view, as well as widening some other local roads, like Route 28 between Georgia Avenue and Leeholm Road. Would have been a better alternative for people in this area and traveling through this area than the ICC. Because it would have directly addressed both the safety and capacity issues that still exist on this road, although they are better than they used to be. And I will continue to work with you and other members of the community to work to make Moncaster Mill Road safer in as many respects as we possibly can.
Back to you, Susan.
Okey-dokey.
Hi, my name's Marcy Myers. I'm a Montgomery County public school teacher. I'm not politically savvy at all. So I'm hoping that you will answer this question in a very layperson term, terms, so that I can understand what it is my colleagues are saying about $65 million that the state of Maryland allocated for education, and that, and 45 thou, uh, million, did I say that? A million of that is not being spent, or not, you know, on education? In a way that I can understand your answer.
I'll take a crack at it, and then I'll turn to my colleagues. Mr. Elrich cares to answer it as well. Let me assure you. Every dollar we get from the state for education is spent on education. Okay? End of story with respect to that. What your colleagues are really saying to you is that the county reduced its commitment to the school system by X dollars, and therefore somehow is misusing the state dollars. No. Had we not gotten the dollars from the state that we were entitled to, we would have been in a deeper world of hurt. We earned those dollars, we fought for those dollars, we spent every one of those dollars. But we made different decisions with respect to how much we could afford to spend on the school system from county dollars. And those are decisions that are debatable. But we think, at the end of the day, again, the school system actually increased by 1%. Nothing else in county government came close. It's our number-one priority by far. Only the school system and Montgomery College basically came through this budget unscathed, with actual, an increase, when so much of the rest of our county was suffering. So, that's my short answer. Mr. Elrich, would you care to?
Another way to look at it is that, um, the assumption that your colleagues are making is that we were starting from where we began last year, and this was 65 million on top of where we were last year. But our revenues aren't where they were, and demands on the budget are different than they were last year. So we were starting lower. Without that 65 million from the state, you would have had to take 65 more million dollars cuts in schools. Or we would have had to take 65 million out of other county services in order to provide 65 million in schools. So, it's a good thing the state gave us the money. Montgomery County, I looked at a chart today, we pay, we are the second-highest jurisdiction in terms of percent of the education budget that's provided by the county. I believe, and I think other people believe, that the state should have stepped up a long time ago and funded a greater portion of education. So when the state funds a greater portion of education, it does help us use resources to meet other needs. And I don't know if you're here before, for the discussion, but, you know, we have a lot, this is a really bad time for people, as you well know. And the needs that are coming through the doors of county agencies are greater than they've ever been. And the ability to have this money from the state provided us, in a sense, flexibility to do other things that we have to be able to do. But you, you can't assume, and I think it's wrong to assume, that last year's budget was going to be the starting point for this year's budget, because we didn't have the money to start there.
Mr. Leventhal, a quick comment?
Well, yes. I just want to say, the budget has passed. And my hope is that we can now turn down the heat on all sides. The school system represents more than half of the entire $4.4 billion county budget, more than half. And so the school system enterprise, the school board, the PTAs, and the employee organizations, including M C E A, the teachers' union, are focused only on that 56, 57 percent of the budget. And they were furious that they weren't getting more. We're focused on the entire budget. So we support education, but we were deeply concerned about cuts to public safety. We were deeply concerned about cuts to treatment for the mentally ill. We were deeply concerned about after-school programs for the very students who attend public schools, who won't be getting a safe place to go in the recreation facilities or in the libraries after school. And so we made tough decisions. And now they're made. And now it's time to turn down the heat. I'm getting a lot of emails from members of the teachers' union, saying, you stinking so-and-so, stop calling us names. It's time to turn down the heat. We respect teachers, we want to move on, we passed this budget. I hope that the employee organizations, including M C E A, the teachers' union, will move on with us. The damage to the school system really has been largely absorbed. The school board has made its decisions. There were no changes in school system employee health insurance premiums. There were really minimal layoffs. There was an effect, and there will be some effect in the classroom. But as Mr. Berliner said, it is not anywhere near as deep as the effect to parks, or libraries, or Health and Human Services. And so now it's time to move on, and really, I hope we can stop the backbiting and name-calling on all sides.
I understand. So, my colleagues are mistaken when they say that this money was allocated specifically for education. That's what I don't understand.
Yeah, your, your colleagues are mistaken if what they are saying to you is that dollars that came to our county from the state for education were not used for education. That is simply, totally, unequivocally not true. Ms. Florin, did you want to make another observation?
I just wanted to follow up with one point. Everybody knew, at least the decision-makers, knew that this year was going to be a challenge. And they knew that a year ago, because this council adopted a fiscal plan that laid it out. And I would encourage, we're, we're scheduled to do this again, I think later this month or in July, in a way that will project what we anticipate will be the situation next year for the major agencies. So I would encourage folks to pay attention to that and follow along. The Board of Education knew a year ago that we were not anticipating additional revenues. We're lucky that we got through as well as we did, frankly. So I, I think it's important for people to understand, at least, this council adopted, set forth an expectation based on what we'd done last year, and we're going to do it again this year. And I encourage people to see what the future looks like. We engaged all the unions, we engaged all the heads of all the different agencies, that they would know and plan accordingly. This was no surprise to anybody.
Hi, my name is Peter Lim, and I'm a resident on Moncaster Mill Road. And I've attended quite a few of the ICC meetings regarding the bike path, and I think that's a great idea, considering the number of people who walk in my front lawn every day. I want to piggyback on what my neighbor said about the safety on Moncaster Mill Road. I do have to respectfully disagree that a four-lane road is, would increase safety, I think would decrease safety. I think it's about speed control. I've personally spoken to numerous Montgomery County Police Department, police officers, who have stated that they have no way to control speed on Moncaster Mill Road, as it stands today. Due to the fact that they don't have the range or a place to safely pull people over to enforce speed. During the meetings, I've spoken personally to S H A representatives, and each meeting, I am completely just disregarded. They refer back to some studies they performed and say, they fall within the standards of safety that they have determined. As a resident, I should not be fearful to walk to my mailbox to get my mail. I should not be fearful to walk to my mailbox to pick up my empty trash cans or put out my trash. I shouldn't have to fear that every time I pull in my driveway, I'm going to get rear-ended. I've been passed on double-yellow lines, pulling in my driveway. I've had brakes slammed behind me when I signal four houses away. Just this evening, I watched my neighbor as he signaled, slowed, and went to enter his driveway with a person, tailgated him, honked their horn, and yelled at him. This is a daily occurrence for us. Pulling out in the morning to go drop my kids off at daycare is dangerous. I've brought up speed cameras that would be a simple, one-time installation to control speed. There's a middle school, there are numerous churches. I've seen accidents when church is in session, there's a crossing guard who's controlling traffic. I've witnessed accidents occur during that time. It's due to speed. It's not due to congestion or any other issue. It's the speed. I'm not getting an answer from the state. I read, I wrote a very extensive email to the state with no response. I just want to know what the county can do to try to push forward some kind of speed control on Moncaster Mill Road. Thank you.
I'm going to give this to Mr. Andrews, who not only represents this community, but also serves as chair of the Public Safety Committee. I do have great empathy for your situation. You should not live in fear pulling into your driveway. So, Mr. Andrews?
Sure, thank you. In turn, let me start on the speed camera issue, because it would require a change in state law to be able to put speed cameras on Moncaster Mill Road, given the current speed limit. So, that is, that's one issue that could be addressed at the state level. It is a state road, of course, as you know. So any major changes are going to be, require state action or state funding. Part of the reason that it is unsafe is because it is only a two-lane road in major parts, and people are trying to weave in, and there are many entrances, some directly off the road, and many side streets where they're merging directly into the one lane. So, I do actually...
Is there, are there any plans for widening 124 north of Warfield to Damascus, for example?
Ms. Florine, Ms. Florine was the Chair of the Transportation Committee before I, and I can't answer that question good, sir. Ms. Florine, can you?
I honestly am not sure that there are such plans. North of Warfield, you said? The challenge is, the M-83 study, I think, is looking at a variety of options that might include that vicinity. But again, that's just planning thinking. I'm, I don't, I can't dredge up an answer to you specifically that would say no for absolutely certain, but let us get back to you on that one.
Yep. Mr. Brown, if you would, give us your information and we'll get you an answer.
Thank you.
All right, sir. Thank you for the question.
My name is Ellen Tenenbaum, and I live in Durwood. And given the, all the complexities and the difficulties that have been discussed tonight so intelligently, what I have to request is, I hope straightforward ultimately, I'm here to urge passage of Bill 1211 that prohibits roadside solicitation to raise funds on the part of county employees. I have three points about that. I drive all over the county, whether it's giving concerts or going to work, I'm always driving around the county and encountering roadside solicitation. This is extremely unsettling and distracting and stressful for me, when my main concern must be traffic safety. Secondly, most organizations, including the firefighters' organization, can meet their charitable goals without mixing in traffic and endangering public safety. And third, with, for instance, the firefighters out there, other less experienced groups see the firefighters, and they believe that they're examples. They will become roadside solicitors as well, and they might even put on very official-looking uniforms, but they're far less experienced and less trained and far more prone to danger. So, I urge you to pass Bill 1211 in the interest of our public safety.
Thank you for your comments, and you are right, this is a little more straightforward, although our council, I predict, is fairly evenly divided on this issue. So, I'm going to allow the chief champion of this to speak, as well as a member who voted against, had a different point of view, but very briefly, Mr. Andrews?
Okay. Well, this is scheduled to come up next week at the county council, so it is very timely, and the Government Operations Committee recommended on Monday that the council support it on a two-to-one vote. This is about pedestrian and traffic safety, and basically, in my view, and I sponsor the bill with Council President Irvin and Councilmember Rice, the county has a duty to make sure its own employees are not engaging in dangerous behavior. That's what we can do at this point, because we can't prohibit roadside solicitation generally until we get state authority. But we can say to our own county employees, on their own time, you can do it, but not on county time. And for the county to endorse what is clearly dangerous behavior, since firefighters have been hit in California and Texas in the last two years while conducting these campaigns, this is not necessary. It's not a part of the job. It can be done in other ways. It should be done in other ways. And it's, and it's done illegally now, when any roadside solicitor goes in the roadway to collect the donations. That's illegal under state law, but that's how it's done. And it puts our police in a very difficult position if they have to try to enforce that under the state law. If the council were to pass that, it's clear that we would address that part of the problem.
Mr. Reamer, would you care to offer a slightly different point of view?
Sure. I also do have concerns about roadside solicitation. You know, when I have seen the Fill-the-Boot campaign operating in intersections that I thought were relatively high-speed intersections, to me, that didn't seem safe for anybody. When I've seen organizations that I don't believe are, you know, legitimate soliciting, you know, that has concerned me. I think we ought to deal with that issue. I favor a permitting system. I think that if we were to establish a process where we could give some guidance to organizations that do seek to do roadside solicitation, making sure that they don't do them in places where drivers don't expect to see people, where speeds are either decelerating or accelerating in a significant way, you know, look at your urban areas and have guidelines that I think will enable people to do it in a safe manner. I think it can be done, but I don't think that the way we're doing it now is, you know, necessarily the answer either. So, I favor some changes. I would work with the fire service and, you know, identify changes that would need to be made, but I don't think that we need to ban the practice entirely. I think it can be fixed rather than eliminated.
Ms. Kennedy?
Okay, we have this gentleman here who will be getting the last question of the evening.
I feel honored, thank you. My name's Tom Boyce, I'm a resident of Winners Run, and I'm going to raise the issue of cost avoidance for the county potentially. These tight budget times, that's a good thing. As the ICC came through the neighborhood, they built a tunnel. Over the tunnel, they raised the road that comes into our neighborhood. So, as you enter our neighborhood now across the street, you have no line of sight to see all the children that are walking over to Redland Middle School. And I see councilmember shaking their head, saying, "Some of you are aware of this." By the way, I want to thank you all for coming out and giving up your time tonight. So, while I feel this is a state highway administration issue, they're soon going to turn that maintenance over to Montgomery County, and we would really like to get your assistance in getting a state highway to address the safety issue before we have to pay for it as taxpayers. Thank you.
Let me make a quick comment, I think perhaps another colleague might like to speak as well. I have personally seen the rise that you now have in that bridge, which does take away the sightlines, you can't see people, especially children, coming from the other direction, there's no sidewalk. I had a conversation yesterday with State Senator Roger Mano, who represents this area, who is also where the problem indicated. He is going to urge the state highway administration to add a sidewalk there. If they don't, I will urge the county to step up and do it. But there does need to be a sidewalk there, because it is not safe for particularly children walking on that part of that bridge, since you can't see on the other side when you're driving. And it's unreasonable to think that the grass is always an option, you know, when it's snowing or when it's wet, you're going to have children walking to school in the street. So, I will continue to work with you on that, and I hope that, working with our state delegation, we get the state to do the right thing. If can't, we'll come back and fix it at the county level as soon as we can.
Mr. Leventhal, did you want the last word?
I would just say, I think one of the benefits of coming out to specific locations like this is that you are reminded of ongoing concerns, and I would just ask our staff to make a note of all of the observations that have been made regarding Moncaster Mill Road, the line-of-sight issues, the difficulty of getting out of people's individual driveways. I think the point that you made, sir, about the inability to pull someone over for speeding because there's no shoulder, and if we could just write all of these up and communicate as a whole council with state highway that we heard these concerns tonight, they're very important concerns and we need to communicate with state highway about them.
Okay. That does it for our town meeting. Some really great thoughtful questions from the audience this evening. I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. For County Cable Montgomery, I'm Susan Kennedy. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you. You're welcome. 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 Thank you. You're welcome.